Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the July 10th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Elder Person Novak.
Here.
Knowling.
Here.
Broat.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Brisham.
Here.
Grobe.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Halverson.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Ten present.
Quorum is present. Please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Elder Woman Novak.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have, under item D, we have one public hearing this evening. So I'll ask the clerk to read out the first public hearing.
Presentation of 2024 Water Rate Study.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Sure. Thank you. If I stand, can you still hear me or should I sit?
Sounds okay from here.
Okay. Thank you so much. My name is Brian Raymer from Ellers. We were engaged with the city in order to review the financials of the water utility and investigate the need for a water rate adjustment. So we're here to speak to that tonight at any time. Certainly, if you have questions, feel free to ask. However, a lot of this is going to be educational in terms of, one, how we view the financials of an enterprise fund for a municipality, and, two, how the Public Service Commission works and views water rates. So we're looking at analyzing that impact of your planned capital projects. Primarily, what we do there is we look at a 10-year long-range cash flow. So we're trying to project out what is the future revenues of the system, what are the future operational expenses of the system, what are the future capital expenses of the system? And then, as your registered municipal advisor, we can provide some projected opinions in terms of how you fund those capital expenses and then what that looks like moving forward. So is that debt, cash, et cetera? So we don't just want to launch, however, from last year's performance. Enterprise funds or utilities operate much like a business. What that means is it costs a lot of money to get these assets in the ground in order to provide 24/7/365 safe drinking water to your customers. So it also costs a lot of money to operate and maintain those assets. You will have large spikes in your operating expenses from year to year as a result of main breaks, you know, well rehabs, any sort of treatment that you may have to do, pumping expenses, et cetera. So that volatility causes us to want to look a little further back into the future instead of just launching from one year's performance. So we do look at a five-year historical rate performance. We develop some projections kind of moving forward. We look at how we fund those projects. And then, most importantly, what is the rate impact for a 10-year plan? Before we get into the fund financials and numerical charts, we want you to understand how the Public Service Commission works. As a water utility in the state of Wisconsin, you are regulated by the Public Service Commission. So you cannot just say, oh, it looks like we need a 10% adjustment for this year's budget. We'll go ahead and do that. You have to apply to the PSC. And there are certain ways you can do that. One of them is called a simplified rate case or what we'll deem an SRC moving forward. And that is a once-a-year adjustment. You can only do it if you're eligible. There's a timing restriction. There's also a financial restriction on that. Your PSC report is also the main identifier in terms of how you are eligible for this. So they kind of measure you based off of that report, understand that that comes out usually in spring based off of how last year's performance would do. So there is some sort of lag there. Then you can also adjust rates through what's called a conventional rate case. You can do this at any time. But you basically fill out a long 30-tab Excel spreadsheet to just say, what is the PSC math return? And that is, you know, what you move forward with towards the PSC. Sometimes you do have some special requests you can make in certain circumstances. In addition, as you are a wholesale customer, you can use the purchase water adjustment clause with Milwaukee Water Works, as you have done in the past. So we'll kind of speak to what you've used in the past through these windows of opportunity on the next slide. Rates were last adjusted via a conventional rate case November 1st of 2020. They were last adjusted through a purchase water adjustment, meaning Milwaukee Water adjusted their rates. Therefore, your expenses would go up. And you adjusted accordingly through what we call a purchase water adjustment. You can also think of that as like a pass-through adjustment, meaning one thing went up. You can only adjust your rates to meet those treatment expenses. That happened on July 1st of 2023. The eligibility for the simplified adjustment is timing. You'd be eligible November 1st of 2025. However, based off of your 2023 PSC annual report, you're not currently eligible for the simplified adjustment. So then, how are our rates performing? As I mentioned earlier, the conventional rate case, one of the ways you can apply to the PSC, they have their math. That math is the bottom half of this chart. So if they're asking the question, how much should your rates be? They say, we have to recover three cost buckets. One of them, and again, we're looking at the bottom half of the chart here on screen. One of them is your day-to-day expenses. So think of that as operating and maintenance expenses and taxes. Then they'll say you need to recover your depreciation, which is just a numerical formula to replace, you know, your current assets in the system based off of their install costs and their service life to say each year we recover X amount of dollars for that. Add that all up for all of your assets, and that's your depreciation expense. The third cost bucket would be what they call their rate of return. This is taken to say, we don't want to just recover our day-to-day expenses and the old costs that we installed the system, right? We may have interest expense in terms of debt outstanding, or we may have inflationary pressures to replace the assets once they do hit their service life. So we do need to earn a little extra. That little extra is configured by your current value of the system times a percent that the PSC sets. So you can see here, over the years, that does change. It is tied to the bond market. So you take that percent on the value of your system and you get how much dollars a year the PSC says you should recover. Take out your other revenues of the system, non-rate revenues, and that is what's called your revenue requirement. We weigh that against your user rate revenues, and we can determine what the rate adequacy is historically for the system. So you can see, as the rate of return adjusts, right, what the PSC says your adjustment should be, adjust accordingly. For example, 2020 would have been a 12% increase if you had applied at that time. 2021, interest rates dropped, rate of return dropped. That adjustment is 3%. There was also a drop in O&M that year. As you can see, it was 7.2 million in 2020, 6.8 million in 2021. So, and then, as we move on, right now, the PSC's rate of return is 6.3%. That puts the adjustment in 2024 at about 10%. The one thing I do want to note is just, it is important to kind of monitor here what that value of the system is, right? So as you're adding assets, that value is going to increase if the rate of return remains the same, right? That math is going to continue to compound on itself as you add assets. The other thing that's happening, of course, is in an inflationary market, when you're paying for these projects, that can compound on itself as well. The other way we do like to look at it is to say, are we making sure that we are paying for our debt and the capital that we have to fund via cash every year? And so that is the top half of the chart. Since utilities do have volatile capital expenses, you'll kind of see wild swings in terms of what your adjustments would be based off of the capital spend of that year when you're funding it with cash. So just kind of respect, that's how the top half of that chart works. However, the PSC does not honor that math. That's if you're doing a sewer rate study or other utility rates. That's how the American Water Works Association would look at either one of those as a suitable revenue requirement methodology. The other thing outside of just annual rate performance to understand is, what are some important financial indicators for utilities? We work with a lot of municipalities within the state. We do about 10 to 15 rate cases with the Public Service Commission each year. And it's not just how are our rates performing, right? There's other factors that you want to look at. One of them is reserves. For a utility, cash is a paramount resource so that you can cope with those volatile maintenance expenses, so that you can cope with emergencies in terms of capital replacement that needs, that may need to happen, and navigate any sort of business interruptions. Again, this works like a business. You're providing 24/7/365 safe drinking water to your customers. It's also tied with debt coverage in terms of the weighted average of importance when you're looking at a utility's credit rating. So Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's have a certain weighting in terms of what are the financial metrics that matter? And reserves is paramount, along with debt coverage on an annual basis. So when we look at utilities, we look at the size of the utility fluctuations and user rate revenues, usages, things like that, to determine, you know, what is the target reserves? Looking at the city's utility, we would say your target reserve should be about four months of operating expenses plus 100% of your next year's debt payment. So our target is in the orange bars. Where your cash position is, is in the red line. You actually have negative cash or that you have a liability to another fund of government in order to, you know, fund the water utility. So the water utility is behind financially. So looking at our rate options, right? We can't just decide what they are. We have to think about what are the levers we can pull with the Public Service Commission? One, looking at the simplified, you're not eligible. Again, that's based off of 2023's annual report. And you won't be able to look at eligibility again until spring of '25, when that 2024 annual report comes out. However, the other one you can pull is a conventional rate case. So we, talking through this with staff, we kind of looked at several options, right? What if we apply now? What if we apply in the future based off of your projected capital adds, other items like that? And looking at that, just kind of going straight to the bottom of this chart, applying in 2024, we have about a 10.5% adjustment. If we were to say, let's imagine a scenario where interest rates go down and the rate of return goes down, but we have our same capital add as we, you know, are planning to within the 10-year CIP plan for the utility. If we were to wait a year through the conventional rate case, that could be a 20% adjustment. Further, waiting another year could be a 26% adjustment through a conventional rate case. So in speaking to that, staff had asked, could you come? Because is there a deadline for the 2024 conventional rate case? And the answer is yes. That deadline is July 31st. So all applications for a 2024 rate adjustment through a conventional rate case have to be filed by July 31st. So essentially, if we want a 10.5% adjustment, that would happen now. If we wait, the potential would be that that could be a 20% adjustment. The one other thing there is actually the future 25 and 26 adjustments would be slightly higher because you actually normalize some operating expenses that only happen every 10, 20 years. For example, like a water tower painting happens once every 20 years. They don't let you set rates at that year's expense for it. They normalize it over the 20 years for that operating expense. So just kind of thinking about that, you know, we didn't factor that in in terms of what the 25 and 26 adjustment would be. That is factored in for what the 2024 adjustment would be. Looking at kind of the future projection, and your utility right now has about 62 million of planned added capital from 2024 to 2032. With no cash, right, the CIP does have to be funded by debt or outside sources, even if it's a loan from another fund of government, right? That's a liability outstanding. So what we've built here is a 10-year model of funding your capital improvement plan with debt and looking at what are the kind of adjustments per se, or what are the revenue needs over time? So here, the orange at the bottom, the dark orange, is existing debt. So that's your annual PNI payments that are dropping off over time as they're amortized. The light orange is your new debt. Again, trying to layer that in slowly over time, not spiking it and then resetting a very high table, right? We want to, if we're going to have to issue debt for, you know, $60 million of projects, we want that to happen slowly over time and then give time for these adjustments to happen. So the one thing I'll note there, the 10% adjustment for the 2024 rate case would set you up if you kind of just eyeball it there through 2028. And then at 2028, right, there would be another investigation for rate adjustments. The other thing is, of course, you could do 3%, you know, simplified adjustments through the PSC to kind of get yourself there over time as well after this rate case is completed. The timing restriction there is you only get to wait, you have to wait one year after those rates are in place, and you can only use it for a period of five years. And then they force you into another conventional rate case. And that should be the other thing that I mentioned is in November of 2025, you will no longer be eligible for the simplified adjustments. You will have to adjust rates through a conventional rate case or only adjust rates as Milwaukee Water adjusts their treatment charges. So looking in here, adding in kind of what the application, after completely filling that out, not just using the simple math as depicted before, kind of looking to see, adding in all the features, essentially the same table as shown before here on the bottom, right, the 10.5% adjustment. We would say, looking at, you know, all-in expenses, thinking about where the PSC may make adjustments to your budget, whether through normalizations, other revenues, you know, the PSC will get a little conservative as they review things. We're looking to apply to the PSC for about a 13% adjustment, all other things being equal. And again, this is something you apply for, and then it is in the PSC's hands. So they will take control of the case at that point, audit your utility since the last conventional rate case, make any adjustments necessary, and then, you know, set the rates at that point in time. So again, this is what we're, what we would say to apply for. And that's if you do it this year. Again, if you were to wait, adding capital, even with the rate of return going down, that could be 20% adjustment or higher. So then, looking at a comparison of what does that 13% do as we compare ourselves to other utilities? We did look at, within a three-county area, some of the larger utilities by customer size. Right now, in that, in that area, you're kind of in the bottom third. With this 13% adjustment, you jump about six utilities there and still be in the, you know, bottom of the middle half, if you will, going from about a $42 bill for 6,000 gallons of usage to 48 for 12,000 gallons, $63 to $72.
What do the E, B, and C?
Sure. Yep. So the PSC classifies utilities by customer size. So the small utilities, I think it's 1,000 or less, are D. The 1,000 to 4,000 is C, and anything above 4,000 customers is AB. So. That was off the top of my head, too. I could be, it could be 1,000 to 5,000, but you understand, yeah. Yep. One thing to mention with this, too, if I were to think about an unregulated utility and operating it in terms of just the financial perspective, I would be consistently recommending a utility try to be in the middle for a couple of reasons within their comparisons. And also, I would, I would want to see utilities that exactly meet our operational needs. What I mean by that is you can have utilities within neighboring communities that have different topography, i.e. different pumping expenses, different treatment requirements. You know, south of here, you'll, you'll see some communities that have more radium, things like that. So they have to have higher treatment expenses. So just to kind of think about those elements, being in the middle in terms of, you know, where your utility bills are, that means you're likely less exposed to the opportunity of, oh, we have a large capital asset that we have to adjust our rates for, and all of a sudden, we have kind of rate shock. And what we would identify as rate shock is something to 20% or higher in terms of an adjustment to a bill. Wherein, that is hard when a lot of utilities are, their main demographic is residential customers, and they can't adjust, right, how much they make as quickly. So you want to avoid rate shock. Kind of being in the middle there is meaning you're probably likely keeping up with rate adjustments and keeping up with the capital asset additions, having a fair balance of debt versus cash so that you're not exposing the utility to added interest costs and, you know, operating the utility in terms of financial perspective in a manner that's suitable and maybe more stable over time. So again, while jumping utilities, I do think that is an appropriate place to land in terms of a comparison metric.
And then I have one more question on the last slide. I was trying to get to you before you flipped it.
Yeah, yeah. No, okay.
I see Milwaukee Water Works listed three times. Is there a reason?
Yeah. One of the elements there is this is something that the PSC actually has on their website. We just try to colorize it and cut out a few columns in order to do that. The reason for that is they have four different rate categories. So they end up being duplicative in terms of what those rate categories are. But that's, that's kind of the reason they have like a residential one, residential two, a multifamily. So those kind of appear for those reasons. And we, we hide that column just because it just shows kind of more PSC classifications that may not make sense to the, to the masses, so. So then, most importantly, what is the impact on an average residential bill quantifiably? Here, I want to mention what we speak to when we're speaking to average residential bill. It's, it's a little cutoff on the bottom there, but we're, we're taking usage at 1,500 cubic feet per quarter, which is about 12,000 gallons, maybe a little under. And that's kind of taken based off of the usage that's been reported in the PSC annual report, right? If you have a single individual in a household for a water user, that might be less, right? You have a family of five, that might be more. It's definitely more if you talk to my kids. So what we're saying there is a usage amount in terms of average at 1,500 cubic feet per quarter. And then the 5/8-inch meter fixed charges, which are both a public fire protection charge. Again, that pays for the oversizing of your utility in order to provide water to fight fires. Has nothing to do with firefighter salaries or anything like that. Just your utility sizing in order to provide water to fight fires. And then your fixed service charge at $15.27 or the fixed component of operating your water utility. So the one element that I would say there is if you did want to see what your adjustment would be, we'll kind of talk through that here when we calculate the bill. So currently, your volume charge is $2.67. The fixed charge is about $36.28 per quarter. Therefore, at 1,500 cubic feet, your quarterly bill is $77.83. If we take the 13% adjustment, the volume charge would go to just over $3 per 100 cubic feet. And then the fixed charge to $41. Therefore, the quarterly bill goes to $88.21 or a $10 change per quarter. If we divide that by three, right, we're talking just over $3 per month in terms of what that adjustment is to the bill. Again, you don't have a dollar-for-dollar or one-to-one ratio of percentage to dollars because your bill's not $100. So looking at that, the 13% change would equate to about a $10 change to a quarterly bill, just about $3 per month. Then again, if you were to say, well, my usage is more 1,000 cubic feet per quarter, just apply that to the volumetric rate or $3.03 in terms of what the projected, what we're going to the PSC for through the application. Applying that to an annual water utility bill cost, that would be about a $41 change annually. We start the affordability discussion, and I'm talking half-yard line of 100-yard football field here in terms of affordability discussion by taking it against median household income. This is what's most benchmarked commonly for utilities when we're looking at ratemaking standards. You go from about 0.3, or 0.43% as a percentage of median household income or, you know, water utility bill as a percentage of median household income to point, almost 0.5%. The American Water Works Association benchmarks utilities in the Midwest region due to source water at about 2% is kind of red flags for affordability. Now, that doesn't speak to everybody's individual income. Please respect that. And we did provide full tables to staff that if you're curious as to what that, you know, we, we kind of take the average five-year bill moving forward and do that by income level at the same usage. And you can see what the percentages would be by income level that is in kind of our full tables. So then, our recommendations in terms of all, all things considered that we've spoken to here tonight is your current cash position will require debt for near-term capital. We would recommend, in order to kind of build the financials of the utility and avoid rate shock in filing a full rate case or a conventional rate case for test year 2024 at the PSC's current benchmark. That's 6.3% for a 13% adjustment. And again, this will help build cash to healthy positions over time. You'll avoid further debt pressures, and you'll be able to pay off existing and proposed obligations for the 10-year cash flow that we provided the city. Waiting, again, could cause further pressure without significant new users, right? So unless you were to add, you know, a very, very large water customer, the math doesn't change significantly. And then later, the, the bottom half of this is we always just provide suggested motions if that's necessary. I understand that's being considered in later items, so. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for the presentation. Are there any other questions from the Common Council? I do not see any. Are there any questions, comments from the members of the audience in our public hearing? Nobody wants to talk water rates? All right. We will close our public hearing, and we will move up right into Section E, Public Participation. This is where the council may receive info from members of the public. This is a 30-minute portion of our agenda, and we ask that you limit your statements to one comment of no longer than five minutes. And we cannot take action on the topics raised by speakers. We also ask that you sign in at the podium and give us your name and address before you make your comments. If anyone wishes to address the council under public participation, please approach the podium. All right. Seeing none, we will close public participation. And we will move on to Item F, which is at the bottom of Page 1 on your agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed there. And if you are here for a license or a permit or some business with the council, please make sure you know which room you're going into. And if you have questions, please ask myself or one of the council members or staff persons before we get into the recess meetings. Move on to Item G. I do not have a, well, I just, I do want to just thank everybody briefly for putting on the Independence Day festivities and the fireworks. And, you know, a lot of volunteers, a lot of work went into that. I was not able to attend this year, and, but I just want to thank everybody who attended and helped put that together. So I guess I did have a mayor's report, but that's it. So do we have any, moving to Item H, do we have any alderperson's reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Knowling.
Hey, so I wanted to let folks know that District Two Alders are hosting a meet and greet on Sunday, July 21st from 3:00 to 5:00 in Rogers Park. We look forward to meeting our community members of D2. Bring us your ideas, bring us your concerns. We're here to hear you. And it is a family-friendly event. West Dallas, West Milwaukee Rec Department is bringing Operation Recreation in in addition to the playground equipment. So it should be a fun event for all. Hope to see you there.
Nice. Thank you. Any other alderperson's reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move for approval of the minutes of the June 11th and June 17th council meetings.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. If there are no corrections or changes, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Move to standing committee reports. We have a few. Economic Development Committee? Sure. Well, I think staff will. After recess? Okay. And then Public Safety Committee, Alderman Grisham?
Yes, we are going to take a look at Item 5, which is 2024-0280 Summonance Complaint Against Flying Unicorn LLC Doing Business As The Thirsty Cactus Saloon, 6108 West Burnham Street, Agent Craig Silver, who Mr. Silver will be coming up and presenting, I believe. However, I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Decker just to kind of give an overview.
Thank you, Alderman Grisham. This matters before the council on a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee. There was a recommendation out of committee to suspend this license 20 days. And a findings of fact, conclusions of law was shared with the licensee. And so at this point in time, the procedural steps are the council should allow the licensee and the prosecutor is also present behind me to, if they wish to, make any argument about those conclusions of law and findings of fact. And at that point in time, the council, any member of the council could make a motion to approve committee's recommendation or change that recommendation for any purpose as well. So at this point, I would recommend opening the floor to allow argument on that form or that document that was shared with the parties.
Mayor Devine, if I may just add, the facts and findings and conclusions of the committee recommendation was a 20-day suspension based on what was presented at the time. However, we gave Mr. Silver an opportunity to, because we want to support his business, that if he could come back and show proof of what his plan going forward is to mitigate any issues that he was having, that we would consider to reduce it to 10-day suspension. So just to clarify that.
Thank you. Mr. Silver, if you can turn the microphone on, and then you can, there you go.
Hello. Yeah, so I was working diligently on this. I know it was kind of a, probably only 10 or 15 days in between the last meeting. I emailed you guys, everyone, a copy of this. I did bring one in case we wanted to pass it around. I'm not sure if everyone had a chance to look at it. A few things since the last meeting that I have put into place. I did hire a business consultant to help me basically take my thoughts and ideas and make this book that I'm presenting to you guys today or that you've all taken a look at. And yeah, I do want to thank you guys too because this is actually great, and I'm glad I have it. So it's much easier to see it on paper and then hold people accountable as well. And that's something that we obviously are going through with all the employees, any new hires and stuff like that. And we're going to have them sign off that they've kind of went through the book. And then prior to that, obviously, if they have any questions for me or the manager, training manager, that we make sure that we answer and get them the proper training that they need. I did also join the Tavern League since our last meeting, so I got some more clarification on the Safe Ride program. Prior, we were just basically using Uber or Lyft if need be. But now that I've, I've worked with them, that's something that actually I found out can be reimbursed, which I didn't know, so that's kind of cool. Also, I didn't want to say it last time because I wasn't 100% sure what I was going to do, but I did purchase an ID scanner as well. That's going to be required to use for everyone. And that actually, it'll show up for fake IDs. It'll show up for passbacks. It'll show up for expired licenses and things like that. So I think that's a pretty valuable tool to have. And also, I just wanted to assure you guys that, you know, something like that's never going to happen again because everyone is required to use the ID scanner and also check IDs. So also in this employee handbook, something that was touch base on is that there's an immediate firing, obviously, if that happens again. So I did learn that too. It's like, I don't want to just meet expectations. I want to exceed expectations. So I like treat my business like my children, so meeting expectations isn't really good enough, you know? So I do get emotional just talking about it because I care a lot, you know? I do want to ask if we can do like a revote and see if we can revisit like the three-day suspension or if there's like community service I can do or take a class that you guys want me to take or pay a fine or donate to charity or any of those things. Because really, we're hurting my employees a lot too by closing, obviously me as well. And there's many ramifications of closing the business down. But most importantly too, like I have people that are working there that, that need, want to pay their bills to survive. They have kids. They have families. They need food. They need to pay for their car payments, their rent. I mean, these are citizens of West Dallas as well and the surrounding area. So really, it's detrimental to me and to them for me to have to close. And I'll do anything that you guys want me to do.
Everything concludes your remarks? Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Devine, based on what you stated, Mr. Silver, and personally, I thank you very much for taking responsibility. I know that the hearing didn't go maybe as you had planned, but some of these things that you presented today would have been very, very helpful at that time prior to us making the decision based on the, the facts that you presented at the time. So I, I feel very pleased that you took all of these efforts for one. As far as the vote that we already had in the recommendation, I want to defer to Attorney Decker to see, I think if anything would take place, we'd have to withdraw this complaint when we already found Mr. Silver in violation. Is that correct?
So procedurally, there is a finding of truth to the complaint before the council. As a result, the minimum suspension is 10 days. The only way that it would make sense under statute to go below 10 days is if the complaint was either withdrawn or there was a finding that it was not true. In either case, the council wouldn't be able to impose any suspension. So the in-between zero and 10-day type of suspension, there is a theory in which you could impose a 10-day suspension and stay a certain number of days, kind of like what happens with court that does sentencing where they impose a criminal penalty but then stay that penalty under some certain conditions. That is not something that's explicitly stated in the statutes. There's not really any case law supporting it, but that is something that in theory could work if the council is so interested in going on a limb. But other than that, if there's nothing more specific like that, any finding of true would require a 10-day suspension.
Mayor Devine, with that being said, I, I can't speak for the entire council, Mr. Silver. I do believe that you stated a good case. You have many people that you're responsible for that have to feed their families. And what we want, what I want as an alder, is for businesses to succeed. We want to have that partnership, but we also have to hold you accountable when these infractions take place. So I would be comfortable in doing a stayed type of suspension to give you that opportunity because I do feel that you've learned your lesson on this. And I don't know if there could be a stipulation going forward that if there are any subsequent issues. I mean, obviously, how would that work, Kale? If we, if we withdrew, can we use any of this in the future if there was another violation?
So if the complaint is withdrawn, it would have to be actually done by the prosecutor.
Okay.
It wouldn't be done necessarily by the council. But if there is an imposition of a suspension that you would stay, you would either just stay it permanently with no conditions or you could stay it with conditions. The law, the law did change a couple of years ago where if there is a police department employee conducting underage testing of licensees, you actually cannot cite the licensee unless they're the person who actually serves the drink. You can only cite the bartender. So if that was something that you're looking into, you could condition that stay upon no further violations by any employees of the licensee or any violations of that underage law at license premises or any violations at all of Chapter 125 of our code. There's a lot of options for that. And when I say there's a lot of options, I'm making the assumption that this concept of a stay is something that would be supported by law, which again, there's nothing specifically supporting it nor prohibiting it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So one idea that the prosecuting case did suggest is if the council wanted to provide direction to the prosecutor on drafting a stipulation outside of this and then withdrawing the case, is something he'd be willing to talk to the licensee about. He would just need directive from the council on what that stipulation would look like.
With consideration to that and the fact that we're presenting right now, I don't think it would be, I think it would be a good idea that we stay the sentence with the conditions that if there are any violations of Chapter 125 and/or any ordinances related to your liquor license, that you will be held accountable for the full suspension and any future action. Is that appropriate, that we can put that in as conditions? And that's just what I'm recommending. We'd need a vote on that.
So that's something that could be crafted and presented. I think there's a rational basis for it, so I would see that as being defensible as much as anything else.
Okay. Then that would be my motion at this time.
So, so, Mr. Chair.
I second the motion.
No, we, we need the committee. It would be the, oh, yeah, you can. Oh, jeez, he's my vice chair. My apologies.
Go ahead.
So for the, for the council's benefit then, the motion would be to impose a 20-day suspension but stay all 20 days subject to no further violations of state or local law regarding alcohol licensing. Now, what you'd also have to add then is a back end on that stay. So for how many years, for how long, for the life of the licensee, something, whatever you'd have to add as far as when would that stay period end and when would it no longer exist?
I would say to the next renewal.
So a one-year stay until June 30th of 2025?
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Knowling, go ahead.
I guess, and this is just my food for thought. I appreciate and understand where Alderman Grisham is coming from wanting to stay it. And I completely understand how hard it is for you and your staff because you are responsible, like you said, for your staff, and they have car payments and house payments and everything like that. But I also look at the flip side in that you are responsible for the people you serve. And that the actions taken now are great. And they're really, like, I love the ID checker. I love everything that you're putting in place now. But it's hard to kind of rationalize that with the fact that it took this far to get to that point. So I don't know how to feel about putting the whole 20 days into a stay. Just my thought.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine, if I may, just kind of to clarify, it would be based on our ordinance or state that we can only go with a minimum. We can't go below 10. So based on what Mr. Silver stated and the case that he made, that 10-day, in my opinion, would be a little bit more rash than what we need to considering the efforts he put in. So yes, there was violations. I believe that having the stay gives a little bit more security to us with this ordinance being violated in the future that Mr. Silver clearly knows what the consequence is going to be. And that's all I have.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, and I certainly hear what our, our committee chairperson Grisham is saying, and I appreciate your thoughts. I think we need to do a suspension of some time here, and I think that we're starting at 10. And I'm willing to go down because 10 is the minimum. That's by statute. I, I would, I would be willing to go down to five, a five-day suspension. So a 20-day suspension with 15 stayed, five served, I would support a five-day suspension. And a five-day suspension effective immediately, in the past, our committee has allowed a certain days and have these days be non-continuous. I would suggest not doing that, just five days immediately.
And to clarify, would that be non-consecutive or consecutive?
It would be consecutive.
Okay. And that would be at the end of today's meeting, starting tomorrow? So that would be 11:59 tonight?
As soon, as soon as we act, which would be the end of this meeting tonight, so tomorrow.
Okay, at 11:59.
At, at 11, at 11:5, well, right.
Okay.
Or 12:01, and that would be the, the next day.
I just want to ask on that proposal, before it goes too far then, would that be, once it's published and I'm, I've signed it, or would that be able to take place at midnight?
You can schedule the time to start at any point in time after the vote. So if it's going to be immediate upon the vote, that's the time. It's interesting because it's a day suspension, not an hour suspension. So I would recommend setting it at midnight on a particular day or setting it from a time to a time. So a lot of times suspensions occur from 3:00 AM to 3:00 AM to avoid having to close in the middle of bar time. So I guess a 3:00 AM to 3:00 AM over five days would be most logical.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Roep.
I was of the impression, we got 20-day suspension here. And I thought if he came in with all of his cures that he was going to do, it was going to drop to 10. Wasn't that what I understood?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Weigel.
Mayor Devine, I'm going to, I guess, concur with Alderman Haas on this. I think the idea of what, I didn't sit down on the summons complaint testimony. But my understanding is what happened there is if, if he's, if there's no suspension involved, I'm, that's a bad message for us to send into the marketplace. So there's got to be an actual consequence here. I was okay, I think originally it was discussion of just three days. I was okay with that. I'm okay with the five days. I, I think, I don't know the particulars of his employees. I don't know how many he has. I don't know how many of them are full-time, how much they rely. I, I understand how the bar business works. You have maybe who, somebody who just works on Wednesday nights. I get that. I don't think there's a lot of people relying on this for their bread and butter other than the owner. But I, I think a five-day suspension sends a message into the marketplace that when we do these compliance checks that we're serious about them, I, I think if it's, if it's essentially zero, but he's on super, you know, it's on probation, and so zero tolerance, that's, that's not the answer. There's got to be an action, maybe not today or whatever day we decide on, but I would support a five-day, five consecutive fake suspension. However, it gets worked out with a 20-day, with 15-days stayed, I guess that's what we're, that's what we're talking about here. I would support that.
Mayor Devine, it was my understanding, and it may be my mistake, Attorney Decker, that we had to go with a minimum of 10. And when you explained that stay, we can pick any number from 1 to 19 if we so chose and stayed 1 versus 15 or whatever number. So I don't have to stick, or we don't have to stick with the minimum of the 10-day because that's what I was thinking was we had to stick with the minimum of the 10-day or we have to stay the remainder. So I'm not in disagreement that there should be some consequence. So I would support the five-day as well. I just wanted to clarify because that was the reason I, I stayed it completely.
So we have a motion in front of us currently?
Yes. And just to confirm, yes, you could stay any number of days between the full amount and a single day from whatever ultimate suspension you impose. You just have to impose the suspension of a minimum of 10 days to start.
Alderman Knowling, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I can get on board with the five-day suspension. I understand where Marty and Kevin are coming from for, we have to set a standard for the community. I certainly appreciate all of the efforts that you've put in. I think the ID scanner is chef's kiss, great control. I would personally be against saying, hey, this starts at midnight tonight. I, I would be in favor of giving at least a few days so folks can arrange childcare and do what they need to do so it's not negatively, in fact, impacting their family life.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine, Mr. Silver, knowing that that was the deal with the 20 reduced to 10, if you came back with the plan, did you make any plans for the closure, based on what you, what you were told?
I, I did have dates in mind in case, or four days that I would, I was hoping I'd have a little bit of time to plan and let people know also, like, hey, we're going to have to close for these days, I'm sorry about that, and work with employees and just let them know, because, I mean, again, maybe it's not their bread and butter, but some of them, this is their only job, and/or they are, it is their bread and butter. So I do have dates in mind, and I wasn't expecting it to, to be immediately, because when we leave here today, I mean, again, you're talking about like products expiring, people not, I mean, there's a slew of different things. So it's something I would definitely talk to you guys about, or we could work out. I did like your original idea of giving me, I mean, because again, it was the one bartender that it happened to twice, and, I mean, I think that you guys felt that I, she was punished properly, and I mean, she was suspended technically, and also talked to, and also knows that, hey, if that ever happens again, you're fired. So I mean, I'm, obviously, you guys want me to shut down for five days. I definitely liked the idea of giving me another chance. And again, some of this I did have in mind, but I didn't present it to you, because I wasn't 100% sure yet if I was going to be able to make it all happen, especially in the duration of time. But I'm fully on board with the 20-day, if, if we make a mistake again in the next year. I mean, that sounds more than fair to me, as opposed to a five-day immediately, or however. But I mean, it's obviously up to you guys, you have to feel comfortable with that. I'm doing the best I can, I want to work with you guys, not against you. I mean, we're a team, really, I want to help prosper West Dallas and, you know, keep good people in there. It's very detrimental, I mean, we've been working so hard on building good clientele, so it's tough to even close for, I mean, three days, because then people go somewhere else, or they find other places, and it's just, like, there's a lot more to it than just saying, hey, we're going to, you know, give you this punishment, and you got to close your business down.
Right, and, and Mr. Silver, just to, to keep time, I appreciate that you're sharing your thoughts on it. That's what the hearing was about. We, we did make a decision. We are adjusting that decision now, based on the full council being present.
Yes.
At this time, I'm going to with, I'm going to withdraw my motion, and if, if that's allowable, or do we have to fail the motion and then re, reset the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
My suggestion would be to just, one member of the council amend the motion that's out there to the terms that that person wants, and then vote on that amendment, and then ultimately vote on the, the main motion.
So we would need an amendment? From the committee.
From the committee.
So, Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
I wish to amend, amend the motion on the floor to a suspension of five days with 15 days stayed, so total 20-day suspension, for it to last until the, the stayed 15 days to last for the remainder of the licensing period, which is to June 30th of 2025, and for the suspension to begin at 3:00 AM tomorrow, and for it to be five consecutive days beginning 3:00 AM tomorrow.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
If that's... Yeah, and on that issue also, I think it's important to include a weekend in the suspension period, and, and we're accomplishing that as well. So that's, that's my amendment.
Does that amendment have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any discussion on that amendment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Clarify for the council's benefit, then, I'm interpreting that to mean any, the stayed 15 days would be imposed immediately upon conviction of any violation of state or local law related to alcohol licenses that occurred between now and June 30th of 2025?
That is my intent with the amendment, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, I think we should probably do a roll call. Is this just the committee? This is the full council, correct?
Elder Person Novak?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Roat?
No.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keane?
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Okay, that is amended. Now we vote on the, the amended resolution? I think...
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. If there's no discussion on the motion as amended, I will ask the clerk to call a roll.
Elder Person Novak?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Roat?
No.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keane?
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. Item six.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
And appreciate, appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Moving forward, item 62024-0317, summons and complaint against Mary Marcus for the suspension or revocation of the Class D operator license. It is a motion to withdraw the complaint.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
If it's withdrawn, I don't know that...
Oh, do we not vote on a withdrawal?
Needs to be a vote.
So I, I treat this as a motion to dismiss in court, which technically the court does have to approve, so you can simply approve the withdrawal of the complaint.
Mayor Devine, I approve the withdrawal of the complaint.
Second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's withdrawn. All right, let's get to the fun stuff. We'll move on to item K.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
Do any elder persons wish for separate action on the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I move...
I was, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was going to turn it over quickly to Attorney Decker. Are you, were you going to touch base on two items?
I can do so before or after the motion, but...
Okay, let's do the motion first, then.
Then I move for approval of the items in item K, our consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Attorney Decker?
For the common council's benefit, I'd recommend, or the recommendation from staff on number 20 would be switched from approve to receive and place on file. That is because Perspective Brewing, which is right across the street from us, brews less than 250 barrels of beer per year, and as a result, state law still allows them to get what's called the off-site retail outlet, which only requires state approval. It does not require local approval. And so the dates in question, they just need to get those approved with the Division of Alcohol Beverages at the state, they don't need local approval. For, again, for the benefit of the council, if they had produced more than 250 barrels, they would need local approval, but because it's less, they do not.
Mayor Devine?
Attorney Decker? But the location where they want to do this is the farmer's market, and we own that. So don't we have to give some sort of approval for this alcohol to be sold on our property?
So the council has delegated the administration and management of the farmer's market to the farmer's market committee?
Okay.
Who would then control which vendors can be on that site. It wouldn't be separately voted on by the council. So the licensing issue is...
Well, I understand that, but, but I'm not sure that we delegate, when, when we delegated authority to run the farmer's market, that we were okay with, like, that committee just, you know, and I guess, I guess we, I didn't, I didn't know we delegated that much authority, because when that decision was made to give them the authority to run the farmer's market, this wasn't one of the things they had the ability to do, but the states essentially granted them. See what I'm saying? I don't know that everybody on the council here wants all these, I do, I'm in favor of it, but...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So this law actually did exist and has existed since the existence of the brewery laws, so Class Bs could never do this, but a brewery could always...
Could always do that.
A brewery has always been able to establish an off-site retail location, so if you saw Perspective, or Op, or whomever, setting up a location years ago, that was allowed with state approval.
I thought we, with the drinking of alcohol at the farmer's market, we always, we always, I thought we always had a handle on that. Not sure.
The, the current code allows alcohol to be consumed at the farmer's market at an official scheduled event.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks.
So with regard to item 20, that'd be the recommendation from staff instead of to approve. And then, item 35? 35, I would recommend approving the settlement with a change to paragraph 5. I got a very late request from the opposing council to make an amendment to one of those paragraphs. I did send an email out to the council, but it was also only probably an hour ago, or hour and a half ago. So if anyone wants to, a summary of that, I'm happy to provide that. If everyone received the email and is comfortable voting on that, I would recommend approving that amendment as presented, that last email with the changes to paragraph 5.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Keane?
Do I make a motion to approve as amended?
No, those would just be in the consent, correct?
Correct, so those are the, those are just changes to the staff recommendations. So if anyone does not want to approve based upon those, then you would, at this point in time, either pull that one for a separate vote or refer it to committee. If you're okay with those changes to staff recommendations, then you would vote aye on this motion.
All right. All right, so we have the motion, we have the second, we have the explanation, and the questions answered. Is there anything else? All right, I will ask the clerk to call a roll.
Elder Person Novak?
Aye.
Nolan?
Aye.
Roat?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Grisham?
Aye.
Grove?
Aye.
Haas?
Aye.
Halverson?
Aye.
Keane?
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Haas?
I move that the council stand in recess until the conclusion of our committee meetings.
Second.